Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. It is Monday, November 2nd. It's exactly 6:01 PM. Declare this meeting open. At this point, I will entertain a motion to waive the announcement of open meeting recordings.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Clark and a second by Mr. Nichols. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
Stillings aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Clark?
Clark aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
Resity aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Jeff did raise his hand. I don't know if he had another point.
I think Jeff, you were just confirming, right?
No, sir.
Okay, so I think he was just confirming his.
No, I have my hand raised.
Oh, you're doing your hand raised.
I do.
Okay, um, I guess, uh, is it pertaining to an agenda item or?
Yes. Ask, uh, requesting, uh, to take one item out of order.
Uh, what item would you like to take out of order?
The woodhouse roof, the, uh, the chair of the, uh, Historical Commission, uh, is Peter Pace here, who just logged on. He can only stay until 6:30, uh, because he has another Zoom meeting.
All right, um, so I don't think we need a motion, but does anyone have any objections to taking the item under correspondence out of order?
It'll be quick.
Nope, hearing none. Uh, we'll take that out of order. Uh, so in your packet, um, just as a little background, uh, we have a request from the Historical Commission regarding a repair on the roof of the Franklin T. Woodhouse building, which is the building, uh, in front of, it's on main in front of the fire station, a little house there, um, and okay, so we will, uh, Jeff, I know this is your item and I know that, that the individual is here. I don't know if you want to go into it a little bit.
We'll be real brief, real brief. I did invite, uh, the chair and also the president of the Historical Society, uh, to the meeting and Sheila Juddkins had a prior commitment on Zoom that she couldn't attend. I appreciate you taking this out of order. Uh, real quick, uh, we did submit a letter as requested to the board and also a duplicate letter, if you will, to CPIC, uh, asking that the, uh, issue of repair to the roof be, uh, looked at as a possible capital expense. DPW Director Buckley was kind enough to obtain a, uh, estimate, which came in a little over $26,000. The roof required, you know, the shingling, but also new plywood, et cetera. And then the estimate was attached. So what we wanted to do is to see if this could be something that we could maybe, uh, push for the next annual town meeting. Uh, I have an application from CPIC. They responded. We were trying to get the date information on the last time that the repair was there and the actual age of the woodhouse. Uh, so we're trying to get those applications in there, but, uh, uh, that's our goal, to see if we can get this targeted for the annual town meeting next year in there. There is substantial leaking to the roof and, uh, inside our priceless, non-replaceable artifacts in there. It's a museum-like setting and, uh, I don't know if, uh, if you wanted to hear from the new chair of the Historic Commission.
Um, yeah, we can hear from the chair and just for everyone's information, CIPCC is scheduled to meet about this item on the 12th.
We recognize that it's not something that's, uh, gonna meet for the special town meeting, uh, probably no, it shouldn't, but, uh, we just want to make sure that anything isn't wrong. We're doing it for the effort to do. Thank you.
Okay, so is it, is it Peter that is the, the chair?
Yes, sir. Peter Pace here.
Um, Peter, uh, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, basically Jeff touched on most of the points I was going to. Uh, right now, we're dealing with a lot of, uh, roof, uh, issues, a lot of water leakage. If I recall correctly, I think there's one room where we had to put buckets out. Um, you, you could even see it in the ceiling.
Yep.
We have a lot of invaluable artifacts, objects, uh, records in the building, uh, that are being used by several people for several different, uh, purposes and it's a, it's an invaluable resource to the town, uh, just the building itself, just being, uh, the home of Franklin T. Wood, who was, uh, the famous artist during the World War I period.
And his wife Hazelwood.
Yes.
Who's an artist herself. Lot of history. That's all we had, guys. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thanks. And I know CIPCC is part of the process too, just so everyone's aware, um, we have capital items come in. Uh, CIPCC, uh, will vet, uh, most capital expenditures based on their life expectancy and, uh, the numeric value of, of the replacement. Um, those capital requests get ranked and the top ranking items usually get brought for town meeting to be placed on a warrant. Um, obviously if there's things of dire need, um, those usually are prioritized. So, uh, CIPCC is gonna be taking this up, uh, at their meeting next week. Um, and I think that the intent, um, while the meeting was just scheduled, it hasn't been posted yet, was to invite, um, you folks to come and speak about it, maybe take a look at what's needed. Uh, we can get some information from Mr. Buckley maybe. And to your point, Jeff, I think that would be something that we could target, uh, for annual town meeting in the spring. Um, in reality, a project this size is gonna have to be big, uh, and it would take a little bit, a little bit of time to get that work completed anyway. So the realistic timeline of having that work done is gonna be spring and now, so.
So that's all we ask.
Yep. Does anyone, uh, have any, anyone have any conversation? Anyone want to weigh in? Um, otherwise, we can just let it work its, through its process.
Just Peter and Jeff. We, you know, I obviously have the quote that you gave me, although I looked at it 10 times and didn't see the actual price, but, but, uh, Jeff did send me it, $26,000 and some change is what I was told this project was. Uh, I did talk to Joe. Joe is, is, uh, very adamant that, that the roof needs work and has to be done. Uh, the big question is where do we get the funding for that? Cause as you know, we don't have a lot of free cash left after this special town meeting, but, um, looking forward to hearing what the Capitol Improvement Committee says and, um, we'll do everything we can to find a source to, to fix it, particularly because we don't want to lose the infrastructure of the building. Rain is the worst thing for the infrastructure, so that's understood, Peter, and, um, we'll look at it clearly and see what we can do, okay?
We appreciate that. Thank you.
One last question, um, maybe this is something that, that we have to look into because I'm not sure of the answer. Somebody brought up that we have a lease with the Historical Society to maintain the building.
That, that's what I was told today too.
I'm not sure what's specified in that lease or whose responsibility this falls to, but in the meantime, I think, you know, we could also take a look at maybe some fundraising opportunities if this is something that the Historical Society wants to prioritize. Leah, you had your hand up?
Yeah, really hard to hear Mitch right now. Um, I could hear you before, maybe you're just a little too far back from the microphone, but I think I was gonna say something similar. Are there any grant opportunities or outside funding, fundraiser, anything like that? Um, I know the, uh, Cultural Commission has grant opportunities often. Um, I'm not sure if something that would preserve the history of Rutland, um, that space is used a lot for the town education and everything. You know, there's often summer camps and everything there also. Um, if there can be, even if it's not necessarily enough to cover everything, but some, you know, something to help defray the cost, I'm not sure.
Just, just so everyone's clear, this is Jeff again. We're, we're talking about the front building, uh, not the studio in the back. That's, that's currently used by scouts for meetings.
Yeah, but I know that, um, I think the Historical Commission or Society, sorry, the Society has run summer camps out of the wood house in the front also, so.
Yep.
Two, three, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Peter, did you happen to look and see if there was any historical grant funding? Because there are some, some programs for historical kinds of things. Did your commission take a look at any of that yet?
We need help on that.
All right, well, give me a call this weekend. We'll see if we can do some homework and maybe we can get the Senator Rep to help us out with that one, all right?
Can I, can I pass way in a little bit? Uh, this is what I do for a living, but, um, Massachusetts has a heritage grant program that usually comes out in the wintertime. It might be open in the next few weeks, um, which this might be a fit for, for the repair. Um, I know that a lot of communities have applied for, through that opportunity for, um, monument restoration and things like that. It depends how we quantify the historic nature of the home. It is not currently, it's my understanding, on the, the state register, but I'm not sure. I, I don't remember. It's been a while since I've applied to it, what the, the qualifications are for that funding opportunity, but the projects are usually, you know, around that size in funding amounts. You might want to take a look at that between now and the.
Definitely will.
Yep. All right.
Uh, Peter Crane, Nate's way. I have a question, not on the roof replacement, but when I hear water's getting into the building now and there are records and there are artifacts in that building, should we look at someplace to move them before the winter starts so that nothing gets damaged over this winter before the roof gets replaced? Assuming that it makes it onto the May Town Meeting or some other.
I think, uh, Ron, could you maybe talk to, I know Joe's been over there.
Yep.
Maybe it's worth having a conversation to Joe as to, is there a stopgap that we can do right now that will get us to the spring? Um, I also want to remind everyone, I know it's taboo to say this, but our largest employers in town are builders and it's a tax write-off for them. So maybe, um, one of them might be able to weigh in, help us out and then write that off for next year's, uh, to help offset some of that. So, um, we can get creative with it. I know, Ron, that's something that, that's in your wheelhouse, so, um, just kind of take a look, but Peter, that's a great point.
Any help is welcome.
All right, um, anybody else on this item before we, we go back to the, uh, the regular agenda? Leah, can you hear me better now? The microphone's pretty much in my face, so.
I can hear you better now. It's hard to hear you and then Peter was really hard, uh, Peter Crane was also really hard to hear, but now you're good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, uh, so we'll go, uh, back to the, um, the regular agenda in order. Uh, next on the, uh, agenda, we have minutes, treasury warrant and payroll.
Motion approved, treasury warrant nine and payroll.
Second? No, go ahead.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion about treasury warrant number nine and payroll? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
Stillings aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Clark?
Clark aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye, excluding any COA expenses.
Okay, uh, and Resity aye. Motion carries unanimous with that exception. Uh, we have, uh, two sets of minutes from October 19th and the 27th for review and approval.
Motion accepts October 19th, 2020 minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion?
Stillings discussion.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, I had some, uh, some typo issues on the October 19th that I could either read in or, uh, submit. I'm gonna just try to find it real quick.
I think that was added to the, um, Google Drive. I don't know if that's something we can bring up and share on the screen. I think Jeff, yeah, what you had, what you had sent might have been added.
Mika, can you?
Mitch, I did not add that to the Google Drive, but I can forward the email to Peter right now if he is able to pull it up on the screen.
Peter, is that a possibility?
That's absolutely possible.
That is possible.
Okay, I'll do that right now.
In the meantime, um, we have a motion and a second, so, uh, I guess we'll just wait.
I could, I, I have my, uh, email up here. I could paraphrase it for the fellow board members if it's okay.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Jeff.
So, uh, the item, we're talking about the October 19th, 2020 in there, uh, on the motion, uh, request, I requested it would be, uh, changed and I did, uh, pull up the YouTube video to get the wording. The motion should read, "Motion to accept the $40,000 gift from Devro School with sincere appreciation, with the understanding that the proceeds go to the Police Department for their public safety use." That was my motion. Requested that be updated on the minutes for that.
Okay. If that was the motion, does anyone have any, any objections to changing it?
No, I have no objection.
Nope. Okay, Jeff, is there anything else?
Uh, two other things. The central tree discussion, item number 39, with the same minutes, um, I had added in there, um, a comma on the, it's like it's this third sentence. Mitch Fields would be premature for the scouts to present a plan to the board at this time. I added, "As a, as additional work with the Mass Historical Commission is needed." Uh, and I also asked that to add in there that Jeff's, and I did go back and look at the YouTube tape here for accuracy. Jeff stated that his understanding is that there is an easement to the tree and property. Jeff stated that the Historical Commission also has this issue on their agenda and perhaps the Historical Commission could be the venue to proceed with the project. The select board can separate itself from the issue. That was on the discussion on the central tree. Questions?
Nope. I don't have to review the tape, but I, I think that's kind of how we run another conversation, so.
Yeah, I mean, none of these, none of these are critical, I just, uh, looking through it. Uh, item 45 on the, uh, commemoration of Officer Greg Trabazonian, uh, just a quick spelling change. It's Trab, T-R-A-B, uh, although we pronounce it Trap, but his proper name is Trabazonian.
Okay.
Correct the name. And then lastly, on item 48, on the discussion on Sunny Hill Estates, uh, last paragraph asking that, uh, last paragraph, Jeff said that he walked the property with Brian Bjorklund, uh, as well, and had learned a lot about the area such as the wetlands and that there may likely be known what is a vernal pool abutting some lots. The vernal pool is relevant to the breeding of spotted salamander, which is said to be present there. Uh, Mitch asked if the vernal pool is registered with the Department of Environmental Protection. Jeff stated that if we are going to sell the parcel at auction, we should at least verify the vernal pool so that we are not selling someone a bill of goods. Mitch stated that he believes the town is selling as is and that the vernal pool, pools have to be registered with the state and everything else looked real good. That's all I had for tweaks. I'd ask that those be added to the October 19th minutes.
Any objections?
No.
We'll need, uh, rescinding of the motion to include, uh, or if you want to amend your motion.
Amend my motion too. Satisfied, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
And, uh, we, okay, so we have, uh, an amended motion from Mr. Clark and agreement to amend his motion from, uh, Mr. Nichols. Um, any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Stillings?
Stillings aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Clark aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
Resity aye. Motion carries unanimous. All right, and next, uh, in front of us, we have the joint meeting minutes from our meeting with Finance Committee on October 27th.
Motion approved, October 27th minutes as, as written.
Second?
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, I also would like to add before we take a roll call vote that, um, heard back, uh, from several Finance Committee members that they thought the meeting was very productive and thanked us for being open to it. Um, while it was long, I think it, uh, really helped us work some things through, so, um, okay, so we'll have a, a roll call vote. Stillings?
Stillings aye.
Whitman?
Whitman aye.
Clark?
Clark aye.
Nichols?
Nichols aye.
Resity aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we have public comment. Um, is there anyone here for public comment? If there is, please use the Zoom feature to raise your hand and Peter will either unmute you or I think some of you folks or all you folks might have the ability to unmute yourself. Peter, is there anyone?
No one has raised their hand.
No one has raised their hand. Okay, no one for public comment. Moving on, uh, we have, uh, Town Administrator Update. Um, Ron?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and actually quite a bit. I'm gonna try to summarize a lot because of what's going on is, is many of you realize that tonight, today, uh, the governor made some major announcements as to kind of rolling back some, some, some events and precautions and things going on. I'll touch on a couple of things. Um, first and foremost, uh, there's gonna be, um, the stay-at-home advisory from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Uh, he's encouraging everyone to stay home. Now, advisory is just that, it's an advisory, but it's really critical. The numbers are going back up again. Governor has expressed a lot of concern about that, is the whole slew of actions, uh, as it relates to COVID-19 and precautions. Um, the restaurants, uh, including food courts are all gonna have to close by 9:30, uh, PM. So if you're eating at a restaurant, when 9:30 hits, you're done. Uh, they have to exit dramatically right at 9:30, so that's a serious issue. No alcohol, adult-use marijuana sales after 9:30. Uh, they're really coming down hard on public use of masks, uh, even in family use. Uh, they want 10 or less people in your home for family gatherings and if there's people that are not part of your immediate family, they want masks to be worn. Um, again, these are all not absolute requirements, but, uh, strong advisories. Uh, the governor's doing everything he can to keep the numbers down. Uh, the chair had asked me a question about, does this have an impact on our town meeting? And I think the answer is no. I think we're exempted, but as I look at these documents further, uh, I'm not sure about that. Me and the health agent had a, a serious conversation about it. Uh, we thought it would be exempt under political activities, but as I'm reading this, uh, there's a limitation on outdoor political activities, uh, or indoor political activities to a certain degree. So we're gonna meet with him again tomorrow. We're gonna try to get something from the state that'll actually give us clarity direction, uh, as it relates to, uh, town meetings. Um, as you know, this all came out, we're having a town meeting on November 12th, so doesn't give us a lot of time to act, uh, but we're gonna do our best. We know that we're gonna use an auditorium, we're gonna have the social distancing, the required social distancing. People are gonna be required to have masks at that. Uh, we'll take all unnecessary precautions if we move forward, uh, but we do want to follow the governor's new mandate and, uh, I'll report more to the, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen once they have more concrete clarity as it relates to that issue, but, uh, I think the government has to function, so I think that they're gonna find ways to allow governments to function in a responsible way. Obviously, we want citizens to have input in our government, town meeting is an extremely important part of the functioning of town government, so, um, we will look very seriously at that and get you clear answers to that question. As you know, I've been forwarding you or providing to the Board of Selectmen, uh, a written report of Town Administrator Activities.
Before, can I cut in and ask your question, a follow-up before we move on to a different item? I know you're gonna get clarity from the state as to what we should do for town meeting. In terms of, because it sounds like there's gonna be more information from the governor's office issued on Friday, because right now we just have a press release and some different things that we're pulling from, uh, and it sounds like the intent behind the governor's, uh, advisory, he was very careful not to call it a curfew, but an advisory, um, was to issue, issue civil penalties for infractions. Um, have we had conversations about enforcement mechanisms, one? And two, we have several businesses in town. I'd imagine, for example, the liquor stores will have to close at 9:30 to allow those employees to be home by 10:00 and to prohibit liquor sales after that. Now, it's up to the communities to enforce this. Now, uh, is there a plan in place to inform business owners that are going to be impacted that this is happening? Because it goes into effect on Friday.
So the answer is we just got this within the last couple of hours. So, uh, the, the, I think there probably is a plan from the very beginning of this when the orders were started issued. Uh, the Department of Public Health can do enforcement, local boards of health, and their authorized agents, statements will place are authorized to enforce the order. So there's a number of parties who can enforce it, uh, and the enforcement goes specifically to, for instance, they actually put out, it's just not a press release, there's an actual COVID-19 Order 54 with Stiles with gathering. So they actually have, they put that out. The problem with the order is I see it, again, I've just had an hour or so to look at it, is that it's very broad in, in nature, right? So it doesn't say anything about town meetings or any of those things, so we're gonna have to try to get some of the more details. Uh, you know, this is, to be honest with you, the, the enforcement penalties are pretty high, 500 bucks in this case. Uh, it's gonna be, I think you're gonna find the Police Department hard-pressed to find somebody $500 for having a vent that's a little too large at their house.
And that is my point. I would really not like to get into a situation where, and we've seen this in the community where neighbors will call on neighbors.
Yep.
I really don't think that in something that hasn't gone through the legislative process, that we should have any right or authority, and the other members of the board might feel differently, to enforce civil penalties on people during the holiday season for gathering with family.
And it's up to 500 bucks per issue, so it's a significant penalty. Truthfully, I don't believe that there's going to be a lot of towns throughout the Commonwealth that are gonna go out of their way to enforce certain provisions of this, but gross negligence on someone's part, you know, they're having a, a keg party and there's 150 people there, you could see that kind of event drawing that kind of attention. I would be highly doubtful that somebody's Thanksgiving Day dinner with 15 people is gonna be something our police are gonna be knocking on doors about, but again, I, at least we have the mechanism in place to do enforcement for those things that are truly negligent and crazy. Uh, and, and again, just because you can find somebody, doesn't mean you have to. You can give them warnings first and do a lot of different things. So I think it's gonna be the magnitude of the event is gonna determine the nature of the penalty and I would suspect that our police are gonna be very cautious when they issue somebody a $500 penalty. It's gonna have, they're gonna have to have a significant reason for it.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, the COVID thing is, you know, this is really just announced. I would encourage anyone watching this meeting to, to go on the Department of Public Health website, look at the governor's orders and get clarity on this, because the hardest part about this is getting the message out to everybody, what they can and what they can't do. And, uh, I think people would be smart to take a look and, and see before they get themselves in any trouble. Um, the Town Administrator's Report, I give you a, a full thing and obviously a lot of work has been going on, uh, to get ready for the, uh, special town meeting on the 12th. Uh, we know we had the joint meeting of both boards. I feel really good about this. We had the attorneys review the motions and we sent out to you motions that had some minor technical changes by the attorney, but nothing of any real significance, but we did want you to see them because they were slightly different than the motions we gave you that night. Uh, you're gonna hear from the, the Fire Chief tonight about the second round of COVID and the kind of application we're making on a whole bunch of, uh, different requests. Did they have an opportunity to tour the senior center? And I looked at it for current activities that are going on by seniors and also looking to potentially open the senior center back up to recreation programs. Um, I said tonight, this all is new, this whole new governor's announcement, which with the numbers going up again, I, not only will I not move forward with the recreation program, I may consider shortly, uh, cutting out the few little senior programs we have. Uh, as these numbers keep rising, as you know, the most vulnerable population is the seniors, so we wanna do everything we can to protect the lives of seniors. And while I, I think there's a hunger for these kind of activities, people really want them, uh, I don't want to risk people's lives to have five or six people at a program at the senior center. I have not made that decision yet. Uh, I brought it up just so if you want to weigh in, uh, anything on, on that issue, I understand it. Uh, this is just something I started thinking about tonight after watching the governor's presentation, but I think it is something we have to seriously consider, uh, to protect, uh, the seniors and the, and the recreation, uh, programs. Now, I had a deal and a program to allow the recreation programs to be in there, uh, and it was gonna mean excess cleaning, some more cleaning in the building, hire a cleaning company to come in, so it was arranged to have those, you know, those two activities occur, but again, I'm sort of second guessing it given what's going on with the governor's office. So, uh, if you have any comments, please let me know, but it is something that I'm gonna have to reconsider, given the nature of what's going on.
Can we perhaps look at, um, if there's a way, if there is still a desire to, because I, I think that the social interaction piece behind this whole thing is what's really damaging in, particularly in our young people. Um, maybe having a conversation about what the options are to have online interaction or online programming. Um, I know everyone's sick at the, of the at-home learning and sitting in front of computers and tablets, but if there's something we can do that maybe fits the need, but also allows us to operate in those parameters.
I know Karina for the Recreation Department is already looking at those kind of things, so it is, you know, they are considering that. Uh, our senior director Nancy, uh, frankly, I thought, did a good job in the way she, uh, set up the senior center, the community center. So I think she used good precautions and again, if the numbers weren't going up, I'd continue to allow that to go on, but, uh, you know, I think you're gonna see, if the numbers keep rising the way they are, you're gonna see a lot of things. if the numbers keep rising the way they are, you're going to see a lot of things. Town Hall is starting to close again. A lot of those closures, frankly, I don't think any of us want to see. But I think you're going to start seeing more of that coming from the governor's office. But we're going to kind of play it out as we, as we hear what the governor has to say. The Heights property, I know the board of selectmen was recently in executive session with the I want to say EDIC, the RDIC. The RDIC, they have scheduled a meeting for Wednesday. And I think that the news will be very positive as a result of that meeting on Wednesday, something I think that the whole town is looking forward to. I've had a lot, I mean, I spend every day talking to the chair of the board all the time, and the communication has been excellent. And I think the town is going to be happy to see something finally moving forward on that project. And that, much as I can say until after they vote, but I want to say thank you to that board for being accommodating, inviting the board of selectmen in. And I think I see a path to have both boards work really well together going into the future. So that's going on. Dispatch, an opportunity is, Jeff, I think you'll be aware, you were aware, we had a meeting with the dispatch, kind of explained what I think is kind of a Rutland point of view on it. The gentleman who is running that meeting is going to meet with me tomorrow. I think we have to have a lot of discussions about how we're going to move forward and the whole dispatch process. But I made it clear of my concerns and I think, you know, I got the discussion for them. I really want to invite all of them to actually see the dispatch, the town administrators, the fire chiefs, and different people in the different towns to actually come and see it, understand not only the operating expenses to it, but also we have to talk about capital needs. And they should have a role in providing funds for capital needs as well. So we're going to have all those conversations, but I think the meeting went well. And Ryan, I think, was very happy, called me up later and talked to me, was pleased that somebody else was giving strong input into that meeting. So I think it'll go forward in a real positive way. I had a meeting with Sean Moore, you're going to hear about that later. The library and the town clerk, you'll see that in the library, we actually had DPW clean out some space through the storage room there so that people can enter one entrance and exit a different exit, so they're not walking by each other. So kudos to the DPW for helping out the library and town clerk. And we're making that work to make it as safe as possible when people vote. So that was good news. Met with the assessor to talk about solar projects and stuff. The finance committee had some questions. I'm going to be working to get the answers with him on it, but I feel good that the assessor knows what he's doing with regard to solar pilot programs. We've talked about growth numbers and what's going on with growth and what's going on with the pilots and solar arrays. So that was a positive meeting. I've worked with the chair for the special town meeting to make sure that we did all the legal requirements correctly and everything, and make sure that we're all set for the town meeting. I think that's important. The COVID numbers, I sent them out to you what the health agent sent. He changed a little bit. We currently have seven citizens in quarantine right now in town. And you had a number of eighty-seven cases since March third. It's actually ninety cases since March third. So that was the reason for the updated note that they sent out to the selectmen. Had a meeting with the capital improvement committee chair, looking forward to working with him to build a robust five-year capital plan. And I'm going to be talking with all my department heads about that soon to upgrade and improve our five-year capital plan. I did have a discussion today with a woman from the Department of Local Services about grants. She wanted an update. I guess you guys, before I came in, you guys did an e-permitting system. It was part of a grant that's mostly done. The land use side of it is completed, completed. And Laura is working on the board of selectmen side with regard to permits that we're doing on that side. That is not done yet, but it's in, she's made significant progress. When you get a community compact grant, you have to report back to them what you did with the money. And that has not happened for two years on that. So I'm going to make sure I report back to them. We also had some conversation about a, another grant that the town had in terms of getting technical support from Department of Revenue Services, I guess, or DLS, one of the two, where they're going to look at the revenues and expenditures for the town and do forecasts. Frankly, it's not what I would have spent money on, but it's already three quarters in progress and the town applied for it. So I'm going to be working with her to provide her information to finalize that and get, see what the state did in terms of forecast. And that's what I have for you tonight, Mr. Chairman, is just a quick summary of a lot that's going on. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I think that was really comprehensive, Ron, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we're moving along here. Move on to old business. First item on old business is the marijuana RFI update. I think, Ron, at this point, maybe I'll kick it back to you. I know you've been looking into everything.
So I looked at the RFI, and as it turns out, you know, this is going to be an issue, and I know Sean is on the Zoom meeting. Had a meeting with Sean to talk about his efforts in terms of the grow part of it. And I guess you guys had a meeting at which you never came to a decision as to who might be the company for the final selling, selling a host agreement for sales, retail sales.
We did.
But you didn't decide on a company, right?
We did.
Oh, but then.
We did. The board voted to move forward with one of the applicants. The applicant, between the time of that vote and us working through the host agreement, they had received the legal limit of licenses. So they came back to the board to offer to put together a new ownership structure and present it to the board at the thirty-day mark.
So I understand that, and maybe I said it in the wrong way, because I I don't consider them an applicant because they were over the limit. So, you know, they can't, under the name that they applied for it, in my opinion, they can't be considered. And in my opinion, since they now want to say and do a separate company to come in, as I said to you, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that's the right way to go forward. I think it should be open up to everybody again, if you're going to do that, that that company already has the three, I think, the three maximum or four maximum from the state. So just changing their name doesn't seem to be an appropriate way to give them that last license. So that's up to the board, but I would be recommending that we put it back out for a new, I'm going to call it an RFI, request for interest. But it sure looked like the draft I looked at, it sure looked like an RFP, which is a different process. But I think we put it out again. And again, I think Sean has a different viewpoint, and he can express it when his chances are. But I think we put it on again, opened it all back up to the public. And if that company wants to apply again, all the power to them. But I think it should be done the correct way, not just, you know, switching names and saying, okay, we automatically get it. That's not the way it is. We, you agreed to give a license to that company, not this new company, regardless if it's the same people or not. That's not the way it works in the procurement process.
I guess before we entertain discussion, just to be clear, too, this is a discussion the board had, in particular, I know it was a robust discussion when the chief was acting. He did reach out to legal and indicated this is something we could entertain. But, you know, having you look at it and kind of rethinking what's fair and equitable for the community, I would certainly agree with that assessment and think it's fair for everybody. But at this point, I think there's a few members of the community, a few of the applicants I see on the screen. I'm not sure if they wanted to add any input. Or I'll open it up to the board, too, for discussion. I know, again, this is something we've been working on and working towards for, it seems like we awarded these, we voted on this back early in the spring. And it's now entering in the winter. I know it's kind of been a long process. So Mr. Moore, you have your hand raised. I'll recognize your name and address, please.
Yes, Sean Moore, three Edson Avenue, Rutland, Massachusetts. Yeah, I agree. This has been for a few years now, the town has been wanting to do this. And I figured the only way to express myself is I wrote up a statement, and I'll email everybody the statement afterwards. But I'll go on and read it. We here at Mass Home Growers plead to the select board to have our company, a local company run by Rutland tax-paying residents, be awarded the retail host community agreement. We believe the select board did set a precedent that, yeah, actually, that's, I said that, but that's not fully what I have to read. So if you could just take that down. I didn't state that that was going to be the statement I was going to read, although it is mostly like that. So I'll repeat. We at Mass Home Growers plead to the select board to have our company, a local company run by Rutland tax-paying residents, be awarded the retail host community agreement. We believe the select board did set a precedent that support is given to local businesses when a non-local corporation wants to come in and compete with local businesses. Like Honey Farms wanted to compete with the marketplace in Main Street Liquors. I hope the board will give us the same consideration. If the town is confident for us to grow marijuana, why wouldn't the town be confident in us to sell it in a retail setting? I believe awarding us the contract will make a statement that the select board does support its residents when trying to create a startup company with the hopes of keeping businesses locally owned, especially a business that will greatly benefit the town. We would also like to mention that the RFI was submitted to the public and given ample time and equal opportunity for the public to respond. The town also created a committee at a cost to the town and to resubmit the RFI will put a further financial burden on the town and a further financial burden on the companies that already provided the town information. We feel it would be unfair for the board to allow us to grow a product without the ability to, without the option to sell it in our own retail setting. And if the board is worried about the ability to open and begin to sell, we want to inform the board that there are dozens of currently licensed cultivators and manufacturers waiting to get their product on our shelves till we are able to produce our own. The Cannabis Control Commission is working on finalizing delivery services. So the need for a brick-and-mortar retail store doesn't have to be an urgent option. The retail license will be sufficient to move product till the storefront is built. Again, we hope the board supports its tax-paying residents with the opportunity to open up locally-owned businesses and will not put further unnecessary financial burden on the town by resubmitting the RFI that already gave the public equal opportunity to respond. We implore the board to side with Mass Home Growers, a locally-owned company, and award us the retail HCA. And I remind the board that the town does have confidence in us to be able to grow it. We ask that they have confidence in us to sell it. Thank you. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Stillings.
Jeff, you have your hand up.
I did, not on this issue. I just, protocol on the agenda. Did we skip the department head update? I see we have a fire chief here.
No, that is on.
I think it actually is part of the.
That was part of the department head.
Oh, that was.
We got to go back to that one.
Yeah, it wasn't listed as an agenda item, but we can go back to that after what I want to see.
Our chiefs are busy. We got to accommodate the chief to get him up on the agenda, that'd be nice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here to specifically speak to the marijuana RFI issue?
I am.
Name and address, please.
Chris Higgins, eleven fifty-seven West Street in Barry, Mass.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So I am going to be the manager of the dispensary in Rutland. I did send a package the other day with a short biography of myself and.
Sorry, what? There's no dispensary in Rutland. What, what company are you representing, sir?
Representing the company that wants to get the host community agreement to put a dispensary in Rutland.
Which one?
It was started by Caregiver Patient Connection and our company.
Okay, so that's the company that was originally chosen for. All right, go ahead. Thank you for clearing that up.
So I just want to know if you had questions for me. You saw my biography, a little bit about myself, where I'm from. Yes, I'm not a Rutland resident, but I've been a Barry resident for all of my life, fourth generation. And local community guy, run Higgins Power Sports, Higgins Energy Alternatives, support a lot of things in Rutland and have a lot of clients from Rutland that come in to our business. And is there any questions that you may have for me as a person?
I don't believe, Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm going to be really blunt with my concern here. We set up a request for interest, and the original company applied under that request for interest. I understand you're limited to either three or four licenses, and we were notified that you could not apply for the license under the original company. But the public, under the RFI process, everybody was informed of what company applied. And my major concern is that all of a sudden, there's this new company that's created. You know, my first concern is, very frankly, it seems like it's going around the state rules for how many licenses a specific company can have. Now, you can change LLCs and change people and all that, but if you do, in my opinion, that's got to be brought back under a new request for interest. So I, none of the public was aware that your company applied for, your new company applied for this this license. So that's my concern. There's nothing personally against you or the company, but it seems to me that it kind of goes around our procurement process. And to some degree, I'm concerned that it goes around the state licensing process.
So we've had this conversation as a board, and these concerns were brought up. So I think, you know, before we get too far in the weeds, as I see it, the board of selectmen has three separate options this evening, if they so are so moved to make one of them a reality. One would be to to against, well, not against legal advice, but against our town administrators and put award the RFI or the license to the restructured company. The second option would be to award the license to a company that had responded to the RFI that was competitively scored. Or three, take the request of our town administrator and put the project back out to bid under a new RFI, encouraging and with the hope of understanding of the companies that are present with us tonight, that they're more than welcome. In fact, we encourage them to apply under that new RFI with apologies in terms of how the process has gone. Is that, Ron, is that a fair assessment?
That's true. And truthfully, there's not a lot of cost to putting out a request for proposals or an RFI. It's really just the ad and putting it on the register and stuff. So there's no significant cost to taxpayers. But I think taxpayers do want to make sure that they get a company that can actually do this project. So I think, you know, a new scoring and new evaluation is in order here.
Just another little bit about my background. We have gone through the town of Barry. We do have a provisional license right now under High Hawk Farm, which is a tier eleven outdoor cultivation license in Barry. Facility is built, facility's been inspected. We're hoping to be on the November agenda for the CCC to have our final license. So we're going to be up and running this spring, being an outdoor cultivation. We've got to wait for the ground to thaw out, but we've, I've already gone through all the steps with the CCC inspections and passed everything required in the town of Barry.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Comments? Leah and Jeff, I see. Leah, did you?
Jeff can go first. I, yeah, Jeff can go first.
Mr. Stillings, go ahead.
I just wanted to add as the curmudgeon on this issue to the board. I did appreciate the package that was sent. I read that with the letters of the proposed business owners. I thought that was nice, and I did appreciate that perspective. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Leah?
Thanks. I, thanks for the package also. I guess I, before we, I've been kind of leaning back and forth, and I feel like in my mind, it's either continue with the new Central Mass Cannabis Group, which was CPC, I believe, or reopen the RFI completely. I think previous meeting, I had kind of pushed, like, if we were going to reopen the RFI, I would have much preferred to reopen the RFI a month ago, so that then this process is already a month down the road farther, and we're not stringing anybody, having the appearances of stringing anyone along, that would have given everyone a fair shake to either resubmit or walk away or whatever, which I think I agree is probably, in some ways, the the most transparent way to do things. And so I appreciate Central Mass Cannabis's time and effort to put that in. And I am, I guess, just frustrated with the board for the way we're handling it. And that's myself included. So I just wanted to say that.
I think, I want to just disagree with you there. And I understand where you're coming from, because I really understood your comments at the meeting we had about a month ago. You know, we were in a transition period. We had no idea when we selected this company that they were going to max out on their licenses and have to restructure. I think at this point, in clarifying with legal and with our new town administrator, you know, the board really has to do what's in the best interest of the town, that also would potentially incur any illegal liability that we would incur. So while the process has not been perfect, I think, given the circumstances that we had to deal with and the way that things transpired, you know, we have to move forward, and really, these are our options. And I get it, you know, I really, I don't want to feel like we're kicking the can down the road, because we're not. But you know, if we have to do things the right way, then we have to do things the right way. Anybody else on the board? Anyone else from the public?
We have two hand raised. Dean, I've only been on, has his hand raised the longest.
Okay, Dean, name and address, please, and then go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dean. I am only two eighty-seven Chapman Road in Barry, Massachusetts. My wife Catherine and I, we appeared before the board, you know, started CPC. And thank you for giving us the chance to not only resubmit our proposal, but for hearing me tonight. I guess the first thing I do want to address, because I take this very seriously, one thing found operating now for the past year plus in this industry is compliance with the Cannabis Control Commission and nine thirty-five CMR is by far the most important part of this whole business. We're working very hard to build a considerable business, and falling out of compliance is something that is, is something we take very seriously. Someone said something about us potentially trying to go around the rules doing this, and I just want to clarify. And I just wanna clarify that that is actually not, that, that's the opposite of what we've done here. Um, in, in, in our re-proposal, what we've done is made sure that we were going to pursue this completely in compliance. So I just wanted to get that really clear. I, I, I guess, I, I guess I understand if the, if the town's gonna put it back out for an RFI, um, we, we still feel really strongly about Rutland. I mean, we, you know, we're, we're in the town right next door. I, I think it's gonna be a great location. I, I think that one thing I've learned over the last three and a half years since we started the company is, um, license, licensing these things is hard enough, but then actually building them and operating them is even harder. It, it takes a lot of time to do this. And, and I emphasize that be- because, uh, you know, we're, we're in a time where, um, there's gonna be two hundred of these things in, in, two hundred dispensaries in the state in, in two and a half years, three years. And it's gonna be a different landscape. Right now, you know, we're, we're, we're in a position to actually, you know, w- once we get the approval of the town, we're, we're in the position to expedite this process, which we've done a number of times as far as licensing goes and the construction goes. And I, I just wanted to emphasize that we're, we're really interested in, in still being, you know, partners with Rutland. The process was a little bit out of our hands. Like I said, the last, um, last time I spoke to you, you know, most developers go and target ten different towns, hoping to get three. And we just happen to be either lucky or just efficient at what we did. We, we went to four towns and were awarded HCAs in all four towns. And, and we did so in every town in, in completely good faith. So I understand the board's got a tough decision here, because you also have to go back to, you know, to your townspeople as well. And if the board so decides to put it back out for an RFI, we, we will certainly reapply under the, under the new corporate, corporate structure that we proposed to you. And at the same time, when we do reapply, we, one, one of my wife's pet projects was to find a local charity where we can donate part of our own personal profits to. She did speak with some actual Rutland charities. It's kind of a, it's a tricky area because five oh one C three.
Dean, if I can, I think we're getting into, maybe we need to stop the discussion here, because we're talking about points of a potential future negotiation, as well as things that would be included that would identify your company. Um, I know that when we reviewed the RFI as the last iteration, the team that we put together with the department head staff did not know who they were scoring. Um, and I think that that's probably a process that we would follow similarly, um, in this new process. So we certainly appreciate the input. I know you're interested. You've been accommodating. We're a little disappointed, um, but we understand that's how business works. I mean, you're applying to multiple communities. Um, I think the other community was Marlboro, uh, which is obviously, it's a different dynamic in terms of the market. So I certainly get that from a business perspective. So thank you for, for coming in and talking about it. Um, we, obviously, anyone that's on this call, we would strongly encourage to apply if the board decided to, to reissue an RFP.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep. Anyone else? See, there's a couple other members of the company. Um, Leah, and then we'll take Sean and then we'll try to kinda wrap this up.
Um, I, if Sean wants to go first, I have a question that I think is discussion for the board, so, um, I can state my, so Sean can go first.
Okay, uh, Mr. Moore.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. If, if I may go back to what you said, uh, Mitch, that the town gave the public equal opportunity to submit, um, to have a chance to come into Rutland. Three companies, um, and, uh, the process was put through, um, and like, like Dean said, he was lucky enough to get, um, three, uh, RFIs with three towns. Well, it kinda seems like he's trying to monopolize the business in which, uh, you know, big canna comes in and tries to, as with anything, like honey farms did come in, wanted to come in and monopolize the liquor business on Marketplace and Main Street Liquors. Again, uh, I remind, uh, the board, the, the committee in the town put full confidence in our company already. We are a local company. We are all taxpaying Rutland residents. We all, um, have great interest in our town. We wanna help our town. Um, we wanna succeed. We're gonna do everything we can to succeed. We have the opportunity to succeed. The opportunity is out there. Um, I do understand that it's not gonna be easy, but that's not a reason to not grant someone the opportunity to open up a business. And I just hope that the board makes the decision to go ahead and choose Mass Home Growers on the base that it is equal opportunity for everybody. We did submit, um, on time, all the information that the town asked. The town gave the public ample, ample time. It's been on agendas. It's been in, uh, publications for a few years now that Rutland has been, well, since, since it passed state law, since Rutland accepted to have marijuana into its town. Again, you have the opportunity to choose with a local company that the, that the town already has confidence in. I just ask to let that confidence continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Leah?
Thanks, um, I was just, if, uh, if the board decides to reopen the RFI and go and restart the process, would, do, does the board envision a similar, um, working group to do the RFI scoring and everything as we had before? I think it was the department heads, town administrator, um.
Public safety.
Group.
Yeah. Um, I'll, I think that would be part of the discussion, but I, I, I personally would be in favor of leaving that to Ron's discretion, because I know he's handled some of these projects before. Um, it's my understanding, Ron, it would be a similar process.
Yeah, it's, it, it sounds like the right mix, quite frankly, Leah. I didn't look at the mix of who was on the team, but what you've described, it makes a lot of sense. It usually is, the police chief is usually very involved, because there's all kinds of, uh, police issues, public safety kind of issues. So that would make sense. The town planner is usually one of the people that might be involved in such a process. And of course, the town administrator. Not sure who else is on there, but at least so is Tree, right off the top of my head. Uh, seemed like they would make sense.
Thank you.
Okay, um, is there anyone else there? Hand up, Peter? Okay, um, thank you all for participating, uh, at this point. I mean, the board can either take no action or we can decide to take, uh, the litany of actions that, that I think we laid out earlier. Ron, is there any other action that we could take that I left out?
No, I think you're correct. I think you could choose one of the two companies that is still in the process if you wanted to. Um, or you could put it back out for a new request for, you know, interest or a request for proposals process. But that's completely up to the board. Uh, either way, I'd like to know, because if we don't do anything, it's just gonna slow down the process. So if the town wants to move forward, there should be some kind of action, so we know where to go.
So this is Whitman. I make a motion that the board reopen the RFI and, um, with a similar process as to what we had, um, previously.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Any just further discussion? For hearing now, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
Stillings, no.
Uh, Whitman?
Whitman, yea.
Uh, Clark?
Upstain.
Nichols?
Nichols, uh, yea.
And Resiti, yea. Uh, motion carries, three yays, one nay, and one, uh, abstention. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And, uh, okay. To Jeff's point, I think we accidentally skipped, um, under our department head update, um, the board was forwarded, uh, a list of round two COVID expenditures, um, from a fire chief night. And for the board's request, I think that's something that came up at a prior meeting. I know that the chief is here tonight.
I could make a comment or two prior to the chief talking? So, so first, thank you. So you did get a, a list, uh, sent out by me of, uh, what we applied for in terms of, uh, funding from the CARES Act and uh, it's actually from FEMA as well. I appreciate the fire chief who put together this information from the various departments who put in requests. Uh, I felt very strongly you guys should see this, uh, so you have an understanding of it. Uh, the chief will be able to explain to you each of the issues if you have questions on it. Uh, I feel very strongly, though, this is a significant amount of money. Uh, this money is designed to, uh, for COVID-related issues. Uh, and we wanna make sure that we're careful on how we spend it. This is round two. This will leave us money for round three, and I think all of us expect that there will be a round three, um, in this process, but, these issues, uh, that you're gonna hear tonight, I think are, you know, I've reviewed them with the chief and I think they're reasonable in nature. They help us in a lot more ways than just COVID nineteen. Uh, but I think the, there, we wanted to make sure, if you had any concerns about any of these issues, you'd have an opportunity to discuss it with us, so that we could decide how to move forward. Uh, but this is really request from all various departments. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to the fire chief, who is our, um, disaster person to our emergency management, so.
Peter, can we bring that item up on the screen?
I don't have it.
I'm not sure if it made it into our packets.
The, the package of things that we sent you didn't get into your packets?
Uh, I'm not sure it's in the.
I don't find it.
I don't see it in our Google Drive. I was just gonna ask where it might be.
Yeah, I sent it out to you as a, just an email, but I didn't even think about the COVID package. I have my copy here, if somebody would like to look at my copy. Uh, I have no explanation on this, uh, and the chief will go through it line by line for you, so that we make sure we cover all of that. But, Mr. Chairman, I'll provide you with my copy.
Tamika, did you get a copy of this?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Trying to see if I can, uh, pull up my copy and I could send it to.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is intended to be informational in nature. And there's no, not really expecting any kind of vote on this, but we wanted to just let you guys have an opportunity to ask any questions you would.
I, I just know it's, it's also something that, um, the board had requested, so I'll make sure we all get a chance to look at it. Peter, I'm gonna forward this to you.
Okay.
Now, is your outlook?
It's open.
Okay.
Did you guys find it? Cause I found it in my email. I can forward it if needed.
Oh, I just forwarded it and I think Peter should get it any moment and then we'll pull it up.
Do you need the copy I gave you, Mr. Chairman, or no?
Nope.
Nobody else needs it. Anyone else need it?
Nope, you'll have it up on screen in a minute.
Yeah.
If it went.
When it comes out.
All right, here we go. We're in business.
Sorry, that's the wrong window. The PDF, right, Ron?
Um, I don't know if you sent it.
That's with your agenda.
It might be, uh.
Yes, PDF, there it is. Okay, perfect.
Let me just share that so everybody can see it.
Okay, uh, chief, I think we're ready for you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, uh, through you, uh, thank you for, uh, having me this evening. Um, as you are aware, uh, the CARES Act funding came, uh, available to us, um, in, uh, late April of this year. Um, we met with all the department heads, uh, various boards and committees to, uh, solicit, uh, ideas and, uh, need requests back then. Uh, we submitted round one, um, the first week of June. Uh, and we were awarded our full ask of a hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars from the CARES Fund. Uh, the total project, um, that was awarded in round one was in the amount of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So a hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, a hundred ninety-five thousand five sixty-seven, uh, was directly FEMA reimbursement, where the CARES Act was to cover our twenty-five percent match in any things that, um, were not covered by FEMA. Uh, so that total project started, uh, we started moving forward. All the quarterly reporting has been done for money that has been expended in the FEMA requests for reimbursement, uh, through, uh, September thirtieth, uh, has also been, uh, submitted for reimbursement. Here we are now in round two and the CARES funding is for all anticipated expenditures between March of two thousand twenty and December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. There is nothing that will, unless the law change, you know, in the state of Massachusetts makes a change, there'll be no expenditure of any available money after December thirty-first of this year. So, and with that said, um, as, uh, the town administrator did say, they most likely will extend it, uh, because of our number casing going up. But there's a lot of other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth that have burned through their money much faster than we have, uh, that will be looking for help, uh, much quicker than we will. So in our round, uh, two, uh, asks, uh, is what you have in front of you. The actual lines on the actual, uh, individual line items that are listed are actually direct wording through, um, the state of Massachusetts DLR. And they were basically, basically just buckets that, uh, we put, uh, funding into and they determine whether it is FEMA eligible for reimbursement or not. That's what you see in that column with the colors.
So is that, is that part of that application process? Because these are just kinda like, select your own buckets. Do you put a description as to what we're doing with each one of those line items?
There is no description. Um, basically, it's anticipated costs that we could potentially have between now and December thirty-first. And we have put together, um, we've got, um, quotes and various items that need to be done. There are some that are basically budgetary items that are just put there, uh, like the unemployment, um, and things of that nature, legal fees. Those things are just, uh, numbers that were given to me by, uh, the town treasurer collector that she felt comfortable with. And similar to what the Board of Health is asking for, for the use of public space and buildings as field hospitals. That's pretty generic, um, area that is kind of broad ranging. And that's basically to cover any healthcare needs as far as, um, getting supplies and equipment that if by chance we have to do a mass vaccination clinic for COVID nineteen vaccination, so we've had to come up with a plan of how we were to dress our own public, um, in, in the town. So basically, we basically put this together. And again, the buckets of money that they're in are not, uh, edged in stone. Is that as the change, as needs change or emergencies arise, money can be moved in between as needed, but that may change the amount of what the FEMA reimbursement is depending on where the money gets moved to. So just so you are aware of that. Um, just so you are aware, if, um, we are approved this, we should hear in the next, um, ten to fourteen days. And the remaining CARES money will be three hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars remaining, um, for this year. Um, so that's pretty much where we're at. Um, and again, uh, the core municipal services, um, during a state of emergency, that's basically what we need to continue to operate town government and keep our, uh, staff moving and providing the services to the community. So that's pretty much, uh, what that first section is. Some of it is staffing costs, uh, the twenty-five thousand dollars in the first line item. And basically, the biggest concern we have is, yes, we've had one, um, member of our staff, uh, public safety staff that did come down with COVID. Uh, we were very fortunate that no other staff member tested positive. But there was, in the first round, there was, uh, overtime costs and people had to be isolated during that initial testing that were covered. Um, so we basically put money aside, because as the numbers going up. Now, give you an example. If my unduty shift of three people on shift get one test positive, I lose my entire shift of three people, um, for three or four days until the, um, the testing comes back. So that shift would have to be completely covered by overtime. And that's what this, uh, money is for, uh, to cover those expenses. Uh, the second one for staff and compliance, basically, this is to cover any additional hours on the accounting office or, uh, our department that I need to help, uh, facilitate, uh, gathering the information, uh, to reimburse some of the costs and get our money, uh, from the federal government. Accelerated telework, uh, basically in round one, we addressed the immediate need of town hall. And, uh, people, uh, because of the town hall being closed and people working from home to, uh, beef up that whole, uh, area. So town hall has the capacity, uh, same with the library, uh, to, if they had to do, uh, work from home that they. So Town Hall has the capacity, same with the library, to, if they had to do work from home, that they could. This time, the focus is now on the public safety departments that we need to address some issues within our own public safety building and the police and fire both have some issues as well that need to be addressed. One big item that was brought up earlier is there is some money put aside for the rec departments in software that will be tied into the town's website webpage. That way, it will help for online signing up for classes, canceling classes, paying for classes online. So that will help keep that department going, but also eliminate, eliminate the need for people to come into the public building as well, so that will be able to be done remotely. The other one is hiring a training of staff to deal with emergency response to COVID-19. This whole situation where EMS is now in everyone's homes on a daily basis, whether we know or that they are positive or suspect that they could be positive, has really put a burden on us as far as how do we treat severe respiratory illness? Even if they are positive or they're not, it becomes a problem. There's certain things that we do as far as procedures that we just got to be better trained on. And this is what gives that opportunity to get that additional training and equipment needed to provide the best healthcare we can. PPE basically is for police-fire and we also provide masks and various other things to town departments, to the election workers coming up. So that's, that money is there. Sanitation and refuse collection, basically if we have a large flu clinic or vaccination clinic, we need to get rid of all these needles, vaccination, so that's money that's put aside there. We put $50,000 aside for cleaning of town buildings. Last time, we had put $40,000 aside. So this time, we beefed it up a little bit more because we're going through a longer period of time that we need to address and some things that potentially could come up at the community center between keeping that building clean if we open it up to rec options as well. So the interesting thing, allowing us to do loan anticipation borrowing and basically what Becky's concerned is if, right now, we have almost $300,000 that if everything is spent, that would be FEMA reimbursed, that we could be waiting up to 60 to 90 days or longer to get that money back. So this would give us the opportunity to keep the cash flow within the community. Now Becky would have to borrow the money and then the interest of that borrowing and the legal fees that's in the next line for that borrowing would be covered under the CARES Act. As you know, we paid for a significant unemployment claim early on. That's the number of $25,000 is to cover the $10,000 we've already paid out. We're just asking for it to get it back now and what Becky felt comfortable moving forward through the end of the year. As of right now, I think the last month, there was only $200 that the town had to pay on unemployment claims. So it wasn't that bad. Election expenses, basically due to all the mail-in ballots and people requesting mail-in ballots, this was an unfunded mandate from the state and posed a huge burden to the town clerk's office just in postage alone was almost $3,000 of unanticipated costs. So we're trying to recoup some of that and cover that expense in the additional election workers as well. As we move into the expanding of Public Health Mission, there's really a couple items there. The $35,000 is to pay for the town nurse and that's for contact tracing and to basically report to us and do all the reporting to the Department of Public Health on any resident that tests positive. And it pays for some additional hours for the Board Health Clerk and the Board Health Agent as well. Use of public space, as I talked to that before, that's basically the catch-all for whatever supplies and items the Board of Health needs during the next couple of months. This time, they opened up a food bank, food pantry directly related to COVID-19. I know the Council on Aging had been receiving some food donations and some food through the USDA and so we're looking at that may or may not continue. And we're looking at the availability, if we go into a large-scale lockdown or residents actually get sick and they have the, are unavailable to head out and get food, that we would be able to be able to provide the food bank some assistance if needed. And the last one under other, these are the things that really don't fall under these other categories. And we had spoken earlier, a few months ago, about Council on Aging Pavilion. That's been modified a little bit just due to the cost, but that is in there. The Board of Health has asked for some modifications to the Town Hall. Again, these are the items that we've had to submit some additional information for, to see if they qualify. So depending on if we get approved for all that, that's where we're at. So if you have any questions, please feel free.
Mr. Chairman, the board have any questions for the chief?
If I may, I have a question. Um, do you, are, we don't know, and maybe this would be coming in the next round. We don't know what the vaccine may look like, but I know a lot of them are very temperature-sensitive COVID vaccine. And so do you have like my, like deep freeze freezers? Is that planning with, I assume that's coordination with Board of Health?
Yes. So again, that's under the use of the public space. We've been making some modifications to the basement of the Town Hall. We hired an electrician to come in and bring in some new power that was needed down there. The Board of Health has bought an additional refrigerator and freezer for that specific need. And one of the other things that are in the other category is to buy some storage containers to store some of the rec department items that were in that old kitchen downstairs to clean up that area so the Board of Health can basically take over that area downstairs. And all the additional items that have been purchased, barriers and various items that will have places to store those items as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Any else? Questions for the chief? I guess my only question, chief, is can you just refresh us on how procurement works for some of these larger cost items? Is it the same type of bid process that we go through 30B? Or is the limit higher in terms of what needs to be bid out? How are you handling?
Everything, everything has been followed under the 30B because we have to show the procurement process. To submit our procurement policies to FEMA and all the contracts that are signed. Most of the contracts, the big dog contracts that we've had have been on the state bid list, so it's been very fortunate. The only time that we would get into a situation, which I don't see us getting into, would be an emergency procurement, which the town administration would have to declare as an emergency to go outside the process and then you have to repost it after. I don't see that happening, so we are absolutely following all the state guidelines on purchase.
If I could comment, Mr. Chairman? So 30B allows you up to $50,000 to get three quotes, at least three quotes for items. So a lot of the items in here would be under 30B, would be under that process. The one thing, for instance, like the, if you were going to do any kind of construction with regard to the senior center patio or whatever you're describing, that would also have to provide, any construction work has to provide for prevailing wages as well. So all of those things would still have to be followed.
Okay. Can we, is there any way at some point, can we get a list kind of of expenditures with, with the vendors? Just out of curiosity to see. I know we haven't, we haven't seen a lot of how the prior two rounds have kind of been spent. I just.
You want to look at round one? Is that what you mean by what? Yeah, I mean, the chief can give you a copy of what we applied for in the round one funding as well. He had to apply for it through the application process, so he has a sheet. We can provide that sheet to you as well. I mean, the vendors would be, you know, depending upon where they are, partial bills and stuff, which you see through the town warrant, but you may not connect it, so to speak.
And that's the issue. I know we've seen a lot of increase in costs in the warrant. It's just.
Yeah, that's where it would be, but it's going to be all piecemeal. You'd be, you're better off in terms of information, be better off seeing his application for round one funding. And then he can, you know, either email me or if you want him to come back and do the presentation back on round one, we could do that, whatever your desire is, Mr. Chairman.
I'll leave it to the board.
Yeah, just, just, we'll ask the questions of me. If you, once we send out the round one application, just forward any questions to me and I'll make sure the chief and I work and get you good answers for what you asked for.
Is he just?
Thank.
Jeff.
Sorry, I just wanted to say thank you guys because I know that this is a ton of work. So Seth is the emergency management lead as well as fire chief and for Ron and everybody else that's been spending a lot of time on it. So thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Chief's done a great job.
Okay, Jeff, sorry.
I stole my words. I just want to thank the chief for bringing this to our attention and for all the work in your troops. Sorry to hear about the one, one COVID experience you had within your department. Guess it could always be worse. But because constituents will ask this year, you know, happy events coming up with Christmas and the highlight is the Santa on the fire truck. Is that out this year or any input to call?
That was actually put out on social media today. We put in a COVID-19 precautions and allowed families the option of how they wanted to handle that. We've had overwhelming support and I think it went up at 2:00 this afternoon. It hits a social network and I think as of 7:00 tonight, it's fully sold out.
Wow.
So.
Be careful and thank you.
Thank you.
I think next on the agenda moving in order, we have Town Center Study Group update. We have Dave, our town planner here. I know Leah, you're also part of that group. I guess Leah, did you want to start off?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a brief update. Oh, can you guys hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. We skipped an item at the bottom of the page. Real quick, a Fall Special Town Meeting.
Yeah, quickly, Mr. Chairman, we already provided you with the articles and as I said earlier in my administrative report, we provided you with the new motions for the meeting. So you have all that and the fiscal breakdown. So you guys should have all the information. We feel good. I will say that the next time I'm here for a town meeting, I will send it to the attorneys first. Before, you know, we did this late because of the timing of the process. Before, we kind of sent out the motions, gave you the motions at the joint meeting of you and the finance committee. And then we went back and had a legal check and next time, legal check before you guys get it. So we won't have those technical errors, but that was just the nature of the timing and the switch between administrators. But that will be the way it comes next time.
Great. And yeah, I want to thank FinCom for being accommodating. I know it was a tight window. Town Clerk's Office, the moderator, Public Safety Chief, Knight also helped put this together and CIPC. Process came together smooth given the circumstances and Ron, you did a great job.
Thank you.
On kind of organizing that whole thing. So kudos to you and your team.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is, hopefully not missing anything else, is the Town Center Study Group. And I'm sorry, Leah, if you wanted to, to start again.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a brief update. This was a group that was put together. The town received a $19,000 grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, I think last fall, to work with CMRPC to identify infrastructure improvement needs, mark areas for economic development, note historical and cultural locations for possible preservation programs and to design a plan to help diversify the town's housing stock to make Rutland more accessible to a wider range of potential residents. So this group was formed, it's a study group formed by former Town Administrator Mike Nicholson and our Town Planner, Dave George. They solicited members from boards and commissions, area businesses along the kind of 56-122A interchanges and the schools and churches. The study group members include Dick Williams, Kevin Jarvie, Harry Sekman, Adam Foreman, Pat Lichhans, Carrie Anne Goldsmith and myself. The staffing support comes from the planning office with Dave George and CMRPC. We've been working with Gabe Trevor. So our meetings have been focusing on defining the study area. If you, I think in the packets, there's a lot of information and there's a overview of our study area, I think. And it's kind of a broad study area. We kind of tried to think about the areas that are walkable, where a lot of the businesses currently are concentrated. So it kind of goes 56 North, Puma-Gusset North, down to right about where the rail trail goes under. And it goes down towards Deveraux. And then it goes Maple Ave down to Maple Ave South, 56 South, towards Paxton to Countryside. And then it goes up and down Main Street from about Watson Ave down to almost Pleasant Dale. So it's really a big area, includes the Heights property, although we didn't, none of our concern is with the Heights property, but it's in the middle of that area. So we put together a survey that's been out for about a month and a half. We've already received a 3% response rate, so we're really hoping to get that number pushed up. That survey is posted on the town website. And it just kind of is asking people what they would like to see their town look like, their downtown look like. And what's some of the challenges that currently exist or that they foresee being possible concerns? One of the big things is walkability. We know that. We know that there's been talk about the Maple Ave sidewalks for the past few years at the very least. So a lot of the information is not new. So it's really at the point now where we're soliciting feedback from the public as an initial round and then coming together to make a presentation is to kind of, to fit a little bit together with a master plan, but also just kind of a stepping stone as to the infrastructure needs that we could use to make our downtown a little bit more business-friendly, marketable and community-friendly, that walkability piece and everything. So the study group has done a couple walkthroughs of the area already. They would like to invite the Select Board as an entirety if they have time on the morning of November 10th, that's next Tuesday morning, to do another walkthrough of the area. I think the past couple walks have kind of focused in on the, the area kind of, if you're looking at the map online now, like the Fairview Ave area, back in behind the Dunkin' Donuts and everything, just there's a lot of small streets back in there. That was the main reason. This is by no means looking to change anything. There is a question about zoning, but just to get a walkability in and see what the areas are and what the concerns are from people, from a pedestrian standpoint.
Question?
Yeah.
The, first of all, I mean, it looks like everyone's put a lot of work into this and looking at the timeline that was initially put forward. Thank you to everybody involved and Dave, I know that you've been working with this too. Do we have a SWOT analysis or any of that stuff that was, that was in the timeline originally for the fall that we could take a look at or is that something the group's still working on?
I think that's something that the group is still working on. We've been working to get together the study area, as you see here, and also to put together, put together a survey, which has not been extended to Thanksgiving, to try to get a higher rate of return.
And that was my next question is, what are you seeing in terms of, not the quality responses, what you're seeing in terms of trends, but how many responses have you received to the survey?
So 3% is something of like around 270 to 300.
How was the survey being marketed?
Survey has been marketed by, it's on the Facebook page, the town's Facebook page. It was on the town's website. It showed up on the town's news blast. It's been distributed to Senior Center Council on Aging. We're going to redistribute the request to continue to Thanksgiving at the library. Once they open up on Wednesday, we'll bring it to the Town Hall. And then word of mouth, we're asking people to tap into whatever networks they have and to help us out.
So can we use this opportunity? I know Leah, I think you had mentioned this in the agenda item request is maybe reminding folks of the survey. We certainly want. We certainly want as robust as participation as possible and maybe Ron. If you and your team could take a look at maybe how to better amplify that to get those response numbers up.
Just like, does the time, Mr. Chairman, has he ever had his own Facebook page to send out information or?
The prior town this year was pretty good at disseminating that via social media and he had a pretty robust following.
There is, there was a time.
There was, but I don't know if it was personally created by him or if that carried over. And that could be something that that would be a good, a good tool to push it out.
The other avenue that that we could do and this goes to public access TV. We can have David go on with members of the committee, Leah, if you'd like to do it and do a little show about this and the importance of the survey and send it out to the public access channel as well. That's usually the hardcore followers usually follow that channel. I don't know about anybody else, but that's another way to get some information on.
Great. And I think just a comment to, I know that you didn't include the Heights property in this map. But it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Leah and Dave, that the the master plan, the preferred uses from nineteen ninety seven that were identified for that parcel. Seem to fit the priorities of the target area that you've identified. So even though it's it's not under your jurisdiction, it seems like it still meshes together.
I think so. I think one of the side benefits is that the RDIC is under works. Hopefully good things are going to happen on that very soon, which do lend themselves to the town center study area. Hopefully there'll be synergy between the two in the best case scenario where whatever happens at the Heights could help to. That would help to flow dollars into the town center. You know, for uses that may not be currently located there or new uses coming in for the first time or expansions of existing use. So we're hoping to get some kind of a trickle out and synergy of, you know, of financial effect here in the best case scenario.
Yeah, and some of it was also just the infrastructure needs as if when, as that property is developed, any mixture of that. What the infrastructure needs would be for to to make that a successful property that might not be included in the Heights property itself. So it was kind of looking at it from a, from the infrastructure perspective, from a bird's eye view with that piece of property in mind. Makes sense.
Can we? And I know that the the team that's been put together is providing input and we're waiting for survey responses to come in. Now we're talking about in this timeline, some deliverables and I think some proposed, you know, zoning by law draft changes. That was something that's going to have to do with Peter. But some could be substantive changes to this area. I would think as a board, we we might want more regular updates or some input into some of those things as they come up. Just because I think it falls under the purview of what the select board as the executive body for the town is probably tasked with doing. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but.
I think that, I mean, this is Leah, but I think that makes perfectly logical sense. I I personally hadn't provided much of an update. We, obviously with COVID, we know that things have been a little bit different. So I wanted to make sure that we had a good foundation of information to provide to the board. And then as more information comes in and we start make, you know, heading towards actual decisions with deliverables. I was anticipating having a much closer contact with the board and, you know, Dave would be in contact with Ron and everything like that. So that was how I envisioned it.
I would think too, the survey, because you are dealing with with some streets and where there are going to be business owners. That we at least allow them to provide some input to. To maybe get their input and make sure that nobody kind of has this as a surprise if somebody's.
All the businesses, I think, have been reached out to for their input also. And we were, we did talk about that doing a follow up to make sure that they had plenty of opportunity to to make their voices heard. The survey actually has a space to say, you don't have to be a town resident to participate in the survey. If you're an employee or a business owner or someone spends a lot of time in town. So we try to cover our bases with that, but there was, we have discussed about ways to make sure that we're getting the valuable input from the the area businesses.
Yeah, and just to add to that, we, most of the surveys being distributed as an online survey with with the handout taking folks to the link. However, we did have one exception. We did a hard mailing to the business community on both sides of fifty six and one twenty two A North and South as a paper hard. You know, we delivered the the request to take the survey to folks individually, all those businesses that we could identify in both sides of fifty six and one twenty two.
Question to you, Mr. Chairman, just either you or David. Have you guys developed an email list of local businesses that we could send out blanket emails to or is everything a hard copy at this point?
My knowledge, everything's been a hard copy. That's one area that is kind of outside of the purview of this group a little bit. Rutland doesn't currently have an active like Rutland Business Association, Association or anything. So a lot of it is kind of the hard copies with the physical addresses.
I think that that that's changing. I know that the group has met a couple of times over the last couple of months, Leah. I've heard that some of the business owners want to start that up again in town. So I think it's something where maybe, I know Ron's already spoken to a couple of members of that community. Maybe we can get it to them and it could be a good starting off point for them to just re-energize their meetings. This could be a first topic of discussion to become engaged.
I think that would be great if you have that information to pass along to, I I hate to put it on Dave's lap, but Dave, just because he's up there. But I'm happy to take it also.
So that is true. What the chairman is saying is accurate that there is some talk about creating that group again and sending that information. But frankly, the simple thing is, is the first thing is developing an email list of everybody so you can, you know, put that group together for meetings and everything. So I know that's partially there. We should build off of that and expand it to all the different businesses in town. Here, you're really only looking for mostly a commercial list because there's no manufacturing. But we should have an easy reach out for general information. And I'll take whatever list they have and we'll, we'll see how we can build off of it and make a more thorough thing. Because that's huge for a whole bunch of reasons, economic development wise. So that's a great start. And I'd love to have a Zoom meeting with all the business leaders in town, just to let them have their input and discussions. And we can tie that in with this group and and maybe have a meeting. Once we establish that we're going to meet with this group and get them to talk to them directly and be able to add input, not just on the survey, but but directly. So we can, we can do all that. It's just going to take us a little time.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions? Leah, Dave, any further comments? I mean, I think this is, this is important work and I want to make sure that everybody in the community is aware of it. And as much information as we can publicize or get out, I think that that's great.
The only thing I would just add is that, you know, I appreciate the work of the working of the study group. The group has been very helpful and, you know, a great group to work with and I appreciate all the assistance from that group up to this point, as well as the select board and whatever line can offer us as well.
Great. Thank you. All right. Moving on to new business. We have a resignation from the agricultural commission. In our packets, it's Angela Swayze. Has expressed her desire to to resign. I think that she is now out of town, so.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Angela Swayze.
Angela Swayze.
Second.
The motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Whitman.
Whitman, aye with regrets.
Stillings?
Stillings, same, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
And Rercity, aye, motion carries unanimous. Sort of remind the public too, because I know we've had some vacancies come up. That our board commission vacancies are posted on the town's website. And would encourage anybody that has any interest in serving the community whatsoever to to reach out and more than happy to entertain those those applications.
So, Mr. Chairman, question about this too, just because I'm not sure to process yet. So this is a board of selectmen appointment, but those appointments still, any citizen might be interested, could reach out to my office and I provide it to you guys for appointment. Is that how it works with you guys? Okay, thank you.
Mitch, sorry, it's Leah. I have a question. Where on the website is the, is it in the news tab? Or is it on under boards and commissions, the list of openings? I was just trying to direct people quickly.
I believe what we've done in the past, Leah, is on the boards and commissions individual pages, the vacancies are listed. I think once a year in the spring, we also send out an email blast and post it, I believe on the front page of the town's website, those vacancies. Encouraging people to apply. I know marketing these these vacancies is just something we've talked about before. And I believe there also, Peter, I think that we had had some of this stuff running on Rutland Cable.
We do sometimes when we get notification and get asked to put it up, yes. It's also, last I checked, it's on the select board's web page also specifically.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Next, we have a master plan grant announcement. Ron.
So, Mr. Chairman, I've looked at this and I've asked Dave to be here for this as well, but I'll give some brief information about this. As you recall, I sent everyone an email saying we received the forty thousand dollar grant. The former town administrator worked with CMR PC to apply for a grant for the purpose of updating the master plan. Specifically, three components of the master plan, the land use plan element, the housing element, the economic development element of a master plan. Not only is it the forty thousand dollars I learned in this grant, but CMR PC, they get something called DLTA funding, which essentially is technical assistance funding. They're going to contribute ten thousand dollars toward this project as well. And it says the town is going to kick in five thousand dollars. So I'm hoping that the former administrator put that money someplace. But the town is supposed to be putting five thousand dollars in it for a total of fifty five grand. Updating the master plan, as you know, is really important to look at the long term vision of what the town wants to be, so to speak. CMR PC, I've worked with them for years, have some discussions. I want to make sure they're effective. That's my job to make sure that the plan that they're developing is effective and is responsive to what we're looking for. David is the town planner and this particular grant comes under him, so he can give you more details about the master plan. But I'll be a support effort with David and work with him on it. But I think, you know, we need to get a good product to see exactly, you know, we have some assets in moving forward. And we have some negatives in moving forward as a town when it relates to development. But a master plan gives at least a vision that we're striving for. And that's really what we need here. Figure out what it is we want to be, have that vision set up and then try to move in a positive direction towards that. And I'll turn it to David for more details about the specific master plan issues.
Right. So typically if the master plan, well, first, this master plan goes back to two thousand. So it's Rutland, it's outdated somewhat. I mean, there's these things that haven't substantially changed, other things have. I would just say it's outdated for the most part. Typically, a master plan consists of seven chapters or seven elements. If one was, if Tom was to do the whole thing, update everything collectively, there would be seven elements. Because of budgetary constraints and the need to take some action on a master plan at this point, instead of waiting, waiting for something that may never come. We decided to apply for the grant and identify what are the major components of the master plan. Not to diminish the other elements, which are equally as important, but typically economic development, land use and housing are the big ones. So, you know, in the effort to be scrappy here, we're going to go after what we can get, do this in stages. And go after the the ones that would seem to have the greatest positive effect, if we can get some good recommendations out of this. So that's where we're at here. So it's not just the forty thousand, it's accumulated fifty five. We're looking forward to getting moving on this as soon as possible, working closely with the CMR PC and the community. And I think what we have the opportunity to do here is is to leverage our work on the town center study. And to leverage the work that's been done with the RDIC to get the word out and to move this master plan in a productive, a productive way as soon as possible for the benefit of the community.
Okay, great. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Peter has a question.
Yes, do you have an, even a guess at the timeline?
The timeline typically runs about a year to two years for the complete master plan. We don't have a schedule for the planning commission at this point. But if the whole thing was to be done as a whole update, it would be typically one to two years, probably two years. And given the uncertainties of COVID and having the public meetings and the charrettes, you know, we probably want to be conservative with our timelines. But I think if we can show deliverables as we go and do multiple things at the same time, that the community can see that way. Yes, we're working on it. And maybe we can implement some recommendations as we go. Instead of just doing everything at the very end, I think we can do things simultaneously, hopefully, so.
The reason I ask is because the open space and recreation plan is due for a refresh next year for publication in twenty two. An approval by the O E E A for its onset of grants that it supports. And I would like to find a way to make, that we make sure between Concom and planning that we coordinate these as much as we can. Because we don't want to be, we absolutely don't want to be in conflict, but more importantly, we want to be truly coordinated on this.
Which the open space is one of the elements and your open space plan was last renewed in two thousand seventeen. So you're on a five year cycle. I think what you have for a working product is pretty well developed. So hopefully the effort to, hopefully the effort to update it will not be such a heavy lift. Whatever help we can offer in the planning department, we would be glad to do so. I'm not sure it falls under the scope of the master plan, but maybe.
No, I'm not suggesting the USRP would be under your, under this at all. I'm suggesting only that we're going to have two efforts talking about the future of the town going at the same time.
I think we can, I think we can best leverage each other's efforts to mutually benefit what you're doing on open space and what we're doing here, I think. If we, I think we definitely can coordinate as we have in other other projects.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Jeff, you have a hand up.
Yeah, just real quick. Thanks to Dave George for the work he's been doing this summer. I know he's been very busy and active. So I appreciate all the work that's going into this. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, thank you.
And my biggest fear, having worked in many other communities, is you have a master plan that sits on the shelf once it's complete. And nobody looks at it. So I think it's it's an onus on us as a board to make sure that we keep revisiting that document to make sure that we're using it appropriately.
That's an excellent point. Pardon me, Ron. That's an excellent point. And I think one thing I'd like to do. Either while it's happening or after it's been finished, is to have an implementation committee, which has a schedule, which looks at this thing yearly. And decides what can be done and implements it and is accountable to the master plan for which so much effort, time has been spent to make sure that we are doing and carrying out some of these policy things. That are going to develop from the master plan. So an implementation committee would be the key. And to stay on the implementation committee, work that into the, to the planning office work plan. So that that is a long range thing. We're not just done once the report is finished.
If we could comment a little about this, right? So when I came into a previous town that I worked for, they had a master plan, Mr. Chairman. It was like you said, it sat on the shelf for two years. Nobody looked at it. They never actually formed the implementation committee, although that was part of the plan is to form that implementation committee. One of the things I would look at, and again, you know, we're ways off here, but I actually took my department heads and I turned them into an implementation team. Because department heads have actual resources. They have money under budgets, they can do things. So one of the things that when we get down that path, I'll be looking at my department heads for part of that. And there's usually when you get a master plan, you get what we call low hanging fruit, things that can be done rather quickly in a short period. And then there's things that are longer term kind of projects. But but I will have my department heads understand that master plan and be, if not part of the implementation team, they will have their own goals and objectives. As it relates to that master plan to make sure that things that can get accomplished. Implementation committees have no money, they have no resources. So that's why department heads tend to be, I found, I had a great team of people that. We literally had a, what would I would say is a project plan with who does what, the timeline, everything else. So I I feel good that once we get to that point, we'll, we'll have a good implementation.
And I I personally like that approach. I think, you know, there's a lot of large scale projects like this. And maybe, Dave, I don't know if you agree, but to Ron's point, you have the low hanging fruit, the mid tier objectives and the long term objectives. A low hanging fruit that gives the community something to really latch on to. It's well publicized. It makes people understand the ball's still rolling on it. But just please keep the board updated because I know this is something we've been talking about for years. It's an important process and it sounds like it's finally moving forward. So I think everybody on this board has been active in in trying to get this this to the next step, so.
One of the things I want to do, Mr. Chairman, is there's a, there's a software product called Microsoft Project that I use regularly when I was in doing IT projects. I'm going to work with the CM Geeks and see what we have money for any kind of software, but I'd like to get that. Because then you can really define out the project plan with people that, like I say, resources, when they're going to do them, what the issue is. So I just like, you know, I'm going to be looking at trying to get that software so that we can, we can have it more definitive. And that can be used for all kinds of projects, not this one, but I think it would make sense to to get that software.
Great. That's exciting. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Dave.
Welcome.
All right. So next on the agenda, we have an interview for agreement for participation in the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is a typical agreement in in Central Mass. A bunch of towns are looking to, how are they going to deal with the long term issue relating to stormwater? And as you may know, this is a very expensive federal. And as you may know, this is a very expensive federal requirement that's coming forward. This basically just allows all towns to contribute a little bit of money, I think in this case, $1,000 a year, to have Spencer, who's graciously taken the lead on this, because it's a lot of work, to apply for grants and to work with the state and federal government to do everything they can to help towns administer their grants and work together. So, I think this is a great thing. It's a typical agreement, intermunicipal agreement. It's frankly very easy to understand, it's very low-priced in terms of what we're doing, in terms of working together. But I will say, and I think, you know, Joe would have been here, by the way, and I told him not to bother, this is a small deal. But over the future, this is going to be a huge money item, because you have to effectively find someone to deal with stormwater, and all towns are required to do it, and there's a planning process. You have to see with Joe exactly where he is in terms of us developing a plan, because there's a requirement by a certain time, you have to present a plan and everything. So, this is just a simple contract to have everybody work together. I think it's a great idea. I appreciate very much the work that Spencer's doing here. And, you know, over the next couple of years, you're going to hear a lot about this issue and, and how we deal with it on a financial basis. It's going to be significant dollars.
So, do we need a motion to sign?
Yeah, you give me the authority to sign, that would be what I would expect. Or you, the way this is set up, while the Board of Selectmen can sign it, that's frankly what I think you would do. Have a motion, have Board of Selectmen sign it, but the way the documents actually set up has signature lines for all the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions about the agreement or the process?
This is Leah. I mean, Ron, we hear that you're all in favor. I assume Joe is also in favor as DPW.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with Joe, and again, I told him not to come, because this is such a minor agreement. But Joe is all for this, and frankly, all the, all the DPW super tenses within this region are all for this. It takes away some work from Joe and has Spencer's doing the work and we're paying a little bit of money, but it takes a little pressure off of him. This is the grant part of it, and it's sort of the introduction to this whole, you know, stormwater issue. So, yeah, Joe's completely in favor of this, and it's, it's going to be something that eats up a lot of Joe's time coming down the road.
Thank you. I know that the stormwater stuff is a big, kind of, I don't want to say burden, but a big piece hanging over everyone's head.
You're right, it's, it's a burden, but I guess it, you could look at it as being a positive burden, but it's a, it's a significant burden on all communities. And particularly, it's going to be something that's going to, it's going to cost individual residents all across the country to pay for this, because it's, it's not going to be cheap.
So, this is Leah, I'll make a motion that the board sign the intermunicipal agreement for partnership in the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition for the fiscal year 2021 through the fiscal year 2025 between the town of Spencer and the town of Rutland.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
For discussion, real quick. It might be easier to, if Leah and Lyndon, you'd be willing to amend your motions, to just designate Ron the authority to sign it, so that, I know that you folks are remote, you don't have to stop into the building to sign the physical copy, if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, I am.
I'm okay with that. I wasn't sure if they preferred to have it from all five members or not, so I'm fine amending my motion.
See, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't know if there's a requirement in this that, that all selectmen sign it or not, because you have the executive authority, so I appreciate it and I'd be happy to. But I think it, you got three members here, at least have the three members sign it.
Okay.
You can use my copy, your copy, just have a sign it. I guess I, I'd say, just because I don't know for sure, and it's set up with the Board of Selectmen, that we should kind of follow the process.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. I think Leah, then we'll just have us sign it, and then if you and Jeff want to stop in, I don't think it's necessary, but if you wanted to show support, it would be really the.
I'll be up tomorrow.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Rositi, aye, motion carries unanimous.
So, Mr. Chairman, along with signing this, I think you have some other documents that all the members have to sign?
Yep.
So, make sure you sign our copies, because last week, the last selectmen, but we didn't sign them all, so let's just make sure we get it.
Okay.
And then if they want to come in the other selectmen, they can come in and sign it.
Sounds good. All right, and lastly, Jeff, we have a Festival of Trees item. I know you have some material, I'm interested in, I think the whole community is interested in hearing about this, given the circumstances we're in, so I'll open the 40.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, I wanted to forward to the board and now the community correspondence we got from the Rutland Historical Society, a young man named Ben Frost, who's taking the initiative for this year's Festival of Trees. It's a big event that we traditionally had in Rutland between the library and the historical society. Always took place at the library and all levels of the library, but with the COVID, things have changed. So, this year, I wanted to provide just a very brief update on what they have planned for the Festival of Trees. It's not going to be indoors at the library, it's going to be along the roadside between Rutland Heights Hospital and the school, Central Tree Middle School area. So, it's going to be static, where people would have float or some sort of a static display in there that would light up. The hours are going to be three to eight o'clock PM, December 5th, and four to seven PM on Sunday, December 6th in there, and those would be like light-up displays. Also, I understand that the tree lighting, the annual tree lighting will take place as tradition. And you can take a look at the document that Historical Society sent on what they have planned, and I don't think there's anything for the board to, well, maybe it is, I guess, because it's going to be a huge Italian property in there. But I would like to, you know, suggest we fully support this in any way that we can. It looks reasonable, it looks COVID-friendly in there, and I'm happy to see that they're doing something to at least keep, keep the spirit of the Festival of Trees going.
Have we, Ron, do you know, has Police Chief or any police detail, that might be necessary, I mean, has everyone been informed and updated? Has the Historical Society reached out to anybody, be it the Rutland, the library, Board of Trustees, or the other public officials that may need to be leveraged to get this done, or?
What I understand is, well, from the bottom of his letter, 100% approved by the Board of Health, Police Department, Fire Department said yes, and he's looking for permission to utilize the Rutland Heights property in a limited way for displays.
Okay, that would have to go to RDIC, so can we just please make sure that Mr. Sullivan has reached out to, to make sure that board is informed? And I know this is something that usually occurs at the library, so you may want to touch base with Kerry and her, her board as well. I guess the only other comment that I would have is Halloween, a group of citizens put together a list of properties in town that they had decorated for a contest. I'm not sure if anyone's any aware of any efforts going on for the holiday season, but it might be something, if that effort does pop up, we can kind of coordinate and make that information available, so folks can also take advantage of something like that.
So, Mr. Chairman, some towns have, I don't know what we have here, but they have a bulletin on the public access channel?
Yep.
And they add all kinds of events like this on the bulletin, when nothing is being played on the show, they just run the bulletin of this. Do we have that?
Yes, we do.
So, can this be added to the bulletin?
Absolutely. Not all this information will be.
Yeah, but yeah, summarize it down.
Yeah, we'll make it, we'll make it pretty before we.
Pretty it up, Peter.
I'm not sure I'm the one you want to pretty.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I think this is great, and I think that your comment, Mitch, about if there's a house decorating contest or anything is a fair comment. I think that was done with one of the PTOs in town and in a little bit of help with the Fourth of July Committee. So, I think that the groups usually all work well together anyway, but definitely can encourage Ben Frost to follow up with the PTOs and the Fourth of July Committee also. Thank you.
As long as everybody's home before 10:00. That's.
So, do I, through the chair, do I understand this is roadside setup? Is that what you're saying, Jeff?
Yes, sir. Skip, my understanding, it's going to be like, the display's a static, they don't move, they're on the side of the road, and then cars drive by. So, people, you don't get out of your car, with the exception, they have a Santa, they're building a Santa college cottage out of a very old trailer for Santa and Mrs. Claus. So, they're working on that, but everything would be with the proper COVID protocols in there. People would move, they're trying to model it against what they do in Springfield with their kind of Festival of Lights, where they have light displays and people drive through and things like that, so.
So, this is going to be set there for a period of time?
Setting there for a period of time. They would have generated power in there, so people could set up, you know, their wagon how they would like and leave it there, or if, if you wanted to do something where you participated, you could, you could do that, hopefully, the weather is dissipating. But right now, they're looking at, you know, five hours on that Saturday and three hours on that Sunday, traditionally how they did the regular events at the library.
So, the police is all set with this?
According to Mr. Frost's letter, that the fire and police are on board on that. But he was reaching out to me, asking, what do I do, what do I need to do to get permission to utilize town space to do this? So, that was the other reason why I wanted to request that it be put on the agenda, so.
I mean, I think if the town administrator is fine with it, I think if he just confirms.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, Mike, it seems like I'm on a phone with Mike a couple of times a day, so I'll think about it, ask him about it. I can't imagine there's a problem with that, you know, it's town property and there's no harm going to be done to the property, so I'll check on Mike just to confirm it. And it probably technically needs a vote. They're actually meeting Wednesday, maybe, you know, I don't know if he gets on the agenda, but at least he can, I mean, it's a minority, I think they could vote just like you use it on Wednesday, but I'll touch base with him tomorrow.
And just in case, just my understanding, it's not limited to only the Rutland Heights Hospital, it would be on that whole road itself or any parts of it. So, I would like to think that outside of the Heights property, where the board has jurisdiction, that we would support that also.
Oh, my, oh, sorry, I was going to say, my only question, comment about that would be, schools in session and everything?
Saturday, Sunday.
Okay, I was going to say, just making sure that it's not going to interfere, that setup or anything isn't going to interfere with the busing setup.
When schools, we haven't gone to hybrid yet.
No, but we're supposed to go to hybrid on November 18th, I believe.
Would we like to have a wager whether or not that's actually going to happen? I'll, I'll, I'll put it down right now, we'll have a Christmas party and I'll provide the refreshments if we actually go to hybrid, but I don't think that's a realistic possibility.
You're only saying that because nobody can go, it's limited to like 10 people.
Sorry, I'm going to have to buy refreshments for 10 people and everyone's out by 9:30, so.
Big spender.
Okay, so that's, that's a good point, Leah, so I guess we'll just make sure that, you know, if that is the case, then there's no interference there with the busing.
Yes, setup, I think would be setup and teardown, being, one would think just before Saturday.
I think that's what Skip was getting at, is to make sure the setup and teardown is done in a timely fashion, so we don't have stuff lingering or stuff getting damaged or anything like that.
My understanding, it's going to be more like floats, you roll up your trailer.
Park it, drag it away.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I think that the town has been phenomenal at outside-of-the-box thinking with COVID and trying to still maintain all the Rutland towns, the big events the community loves so much. So, it's definitely looked different, but I give huge props to all the groups in town that are really doing the outside-of-the-box thinking to still keep that community feel and engagement. So, and that even goes to Fire Department and everything with the Santa around too, so driving around, so. Great job to everybody in town.
Could we, just in the, in the event that we don't have an opportunity to meet again, since this was on the agenda, could we put together a motion to support the, the new Festival of Trees on areas that's outside the jurisdiction of the RDIC?
I'll just make that motion just a second, I think Ron had another quick comment.
I'm just, usually towns have this on Town Greens, Town Commons. Do we have one? Is there a normal place that these kind of events would occur?
Well, we usually, the, the Festival of Trees usually occurs in, inside the library. I mean, the, the Christmas party, and that's one of the reasons my wife and I moved here, because it's like a Hallmark movie around Christmas time, which my wife's really into, and she's watching at home, so she'll be mad at me for saying that. But the, the, the tree lighting ceremony takes place outside the library, and then we have the auction and the festival inside the library in the big room and then spilling out in the other common areas. So, we kind of utilize in front of Community Hall to down to the end of in front of the library.
We don't, we don't have a gazebo or anything like that, where it would be like a centerpiece for town community events, there's nothing like that here?
No, no. For Fourth of July, we use, again, in front of Community Hall and then behind the fields, things like that, we set the stage, the whole thing.
One of the interesting suggestions is to tie that, and I've done it before, and it really, again, I don't know if we have money or we can even figure a way to do it. But one of the nice kind of things that some towns do is they build skating rinks for the winter, and they're really not that expensive to build, and you have them sort of in the community center to attract people to come down and grandchildren and everything else. Really, really nice. I think it was the senior center actually, director recommended and brought that idea up again here for something to look at, because it really tends to benefit younger children. But it's something I think we can take a look at, I just don't know if there's resources. But it, whenever I've seen it done, and when I've done it in my hometown, it was a huge hit among grandparents and group kids. But it's something to look at, but that, that's what I mean by, I think the gazebo in the town center someplace where people can gather and do that kind of things is nice, something we should, I think we should look at, the gathering places more set up to be a gathering place, like the gazebo and music and different things.
I did work on the Worcester Rink that was open, so.
Did you?
Yeah, that was a fun project.
Yeah, it is fun.
But, all right, I guess with that said, Jeff, did you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the town offers support in use of area on the Silk Tree Middle School Road outside the jurisdiction of the Rutland Heights Hospital for the presented Festival of Trees agenda to take place December 5th and 6th, 2020.
Wait a second.
All right, any further discussion?
So then, yes.
Go ahead.
So, then it's not going to be in Rutland Heights at all, it's going to be down by the school?
Ah, it's going to start there. If you looked at that letter, I believe, it's, it could be anywhere along that road, including use of the Heights. I mean, they're going to be driving the road from Maple Ave to Main Street in there.
I think it just depends on the participation, is that kind of what I gather, right?
But he said not Rutland Heights.
No, including Rutland Heights.
Including Rutland Heights, so not, Rutland Heights would be the jurisdiction of the RDIC, so we're not going to motion on that. But outside of that jurisdiction, if it does go outside that specifically in that circle, I don't even know what the road's name is on that road that we allow for it as they presented in their outline.
If there's any more logistical planning, you know, I would welcome the Historical Society to come before us and we could help figure that out. So, we certainly appreciate the effort. But we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Rositi, aye, motion carries unanimous. Is there anything else to come from the board?
Motion adjourned.
Hearing none, I'll have to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing them, we'll have a roll call vote. Whitman?
Aye.[1758.24]